Let's call the City and Marine City Commission Meeting to order a virtual meeting via phone conference from work, regular meeting Thursday, April 16th at 7:00 PM. Let's please have a moment of silence for our dearly departed. And let's please all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of Washington. One nation, under God, indivisible, without ever the injustice. Roll call, please.
Mayor Van Nuys.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson. Commissioner Bryson. Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Claussen.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Here.
City Manager Levin.
Here.
All right, moving on to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion? Yes.
Um, when, um, I'd like to make a motion to add, um, to the agenda from our last meeting, an item from our last meeting. When, when do I do that?
Right now.
Right now, okay. So, um, I guess, um, Paul Merchant would like to make a motion to add an additional agenda item, uh, from our last meeting, uh, for reconsideration. Uh, the Marine City Garden Club watering of flowers.
Okay, so we'll put that on under unfinished business. Number A, 9A water, flower watering. Does anyone else like to add anything to the agenda? All right, any, I'll need a approval of the agenda or motion to approve the agenda with the addition of 9A.
So moved.
Support.
Identify yourself.
Yes, you've got to tell us who's supporting.
Oh, sorry, so moved. Callahan?
And supported by Verkaman.
Thank you.
Any questions on the agenda? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
I'm going to try another time. Uh, Commissioner Bryson, are you there? No, okay. Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman?
Yes.
Mayor Van Nuys?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're going to move on to public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and please limit your comments to five minutes. This is your time to raise issues. The Commission will not respond, but issues will be followed upon as necessary. Anyone like to speak?
Um, Jeannie Frank here.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Um, I'm hoping that the Commission sees the necessity in the flower program. With the dissolution of TIPA, the Garden Club, through fundraising efforts, has assumed the cost of purchase of flowers through both the hanging baskets and the barrels, as well as the fertilization. And based on earlier conversations we had with the officials, we have already committed to purchasing them for this year. But we need your continued support in this to provide the daily watering and maintenance in order to keep them alive. So I'm asking you to please reconsider continuing your partnership with the Garden Club in regards to the summer flower program. Flowers generate happiness, they improve people's mood, they create a perception of a higher quality of life which benefits the entire community. They increase levels of positive energy, as well as reducing crime rates, just to name a few of their benefits. This would mark the 12th anniversary for the annual Marine City Beautification Day that the volunteers of the Garden Club in 2008. In 2008, when the flower program started, Marine City was in dire need of something. It was basically a ghost town. But the Garden Club knew all the many wonderful benefits flowers in the town provide and we had a vision. Our idea of the annual beautification day was meant to encourage homeowners and businesses to get out and add some flowers to their homes or storefronts. We envisioned creating a premier place to live, work, and shop, and instilling some community pride throughout the city. And that's just what happened. Because from there, the streetscape evolved, creating a beautiful gateway to our historic downtown. Then a couple of businesses popped up, inspiring a set from under the radar, which put us on the radar. Even more businesses were attracted to our town, and here we are today with a bustling downtown district, lots of shops, three theaters, more restaurants, a hotel, and our little city has turned into one of Michigan's destination towns. However, now as we find ourselves on the heels of COVID-19, our city once again looks like the ghost town of 2008. Our businesses, the ones that are still open, are struggling, and we are, are all praying and waiting to see what is going to happen once we have been given the green light to reopen and attempt to go back to normal. To know it is even more important that we support our historical downtown and other business districts the best we can by continuing to offer the same beautiful flowers that we are known for. Our residents need this, our businesses, our visitors, and our children all need this. We can provide some sense of normalcy just by continuing on with the program that has proven itself successful and well worth the investment over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Going once, going twice. All right, moving on to, uh, approval of the City Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, April 2nd, 2020.
Hey, Dave, it's Jacob Bryson. Sorry I'm late.
Nope. Can I get a motion to approve the Commission Regular Meeting Minute?
Merchant, so moved.
Support Bill Claussen.
Any questions, concerns, or additions or deletions to the minute?
Dave, Lisa Hendrick, I requested two additions.
Go ahead.
Because of some information was from the last meeting. Um, my Commissioner privileged comments weren't correct, um, because I thanked all the employees. I asked for that to be put in, and I asked for a couple items for the, um, lawn service issue to be put in, and I sent those to Chris. So I don't know what's.
I got them, Lisa.
Okay. And it was just to add a couple notes to what our discussion was.
Okay. Um, Paul, would you amend your motion to accept those additions?
Uh, yes, I will amend my motion to accept the, um, additions, uh, from, um, Commissioner Hendrick.
And we still have support?
I'll still support it. Still Claussen.
Okay. Any other corrections or deletions to the minute? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan? Commissioner Callahan?
Yes. You get me?
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman?
Yes, Verkaman, yes.
Mayor Van Nuys?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the Consent Agenda, which, which is the monthly activity reports and Marine City Area Fire Authority run report. Can I get a motion to approve?
Merchant, motion to approve Consent Agenda, both issues A and B.
Callahan, support.
All right, so we got motion, support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan?
Support.
Commissioner Claussen? Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman?
Yes.
Mayor Van Nuys?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to financial business. Disbursements, including payroll, for 203,545 dollars and 77 cents. Can I get a motion to approve disbursements?
Mayor, I make a motion. Go ahead, go ahead, Wendy.
Callahan, I make a motion to approve disbursements, including payroll, for 203,545 dollars and 77 cents.
I support that, Verkaman.
Any questions or concerns on disbursements?
Yes, Hendrick, I have two. Um, one is on page eight. There's, uh, repaired a two-inch underground conduit under City Hall. What was that for?
So when Friends of City Hall was doing work over at 300 Broadway, there was a misdig call, and misdig did not find this particular electrical line that went from the police department to the main panel, and that was to repair that line.
All right, so we're on the hook for that money. Okay, second one is, I see we had a huge repair on the, um, John Deere. What happened there, do you know?
It was the transmission.
All right, that's a $6,200 fix. All right, that's all.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman?
Yes.
Mayor Van Nuys?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to preliminary financial statements. We will need a motion to receive and file.
Bill Claussen, I'm making motion to receive and file.
Jacob Bryson.
Callahan, support.
Okay, we have motion support. Any questions on the preliminary financial statement? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman?
Yes.
Mayor Van Nuys?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to unfinished business, revisiting the flower watering. Mr. Merchant, or Commissioner Merchant, you asked to have this put back, um, what would you like to hear tonight?
Um, so do I have to make a motion at this point to, at any, um?
Robert Davis here. If you want to do a motion to reconsider, then only certain entities, um, can bring that motion. And then when you bring the motion, if there's a second, the debate is limited to the question of reconsideration and not the substance of the issue. If there's an affirmative vote to do the reconsideration, then somebody makes a motion with respect to the substance of the topic, and you vote on it as if it's fresh in front of you.
Okay, so Bob, what you're saying is?
Mr. Merchant, did you vote in favor of this the last time?
I did not. I voted against it.
Okay, I, uh, Clerk Baxter, I think he's one of the one, who are the three that could possibly bring this motion?
Um, Commissioners Merchant, Hendrick, or Claussen. Those are the three that were opposed.
Okay, so who have, one of those three would have to bring this motion?
Okay, so, um, I, um, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the Marine City Garden Club flower watering item. Correct?
Okay, and can we, do we have support?
I supported Verkaman.
Okay. And so we are going to, then, we can discuss just the reconsideration. We're not talking about the watering, just reconsidering it right now. Does anybody have a, an issue with it?
Yeah, um, I have one question, and I thought that when we voted for it, it was to approve it for this year, but not for next year's budget.
Right now, we're just talking about reconsidering it, so we're not talking actually about the watering itself, just the.
All you're, all you're talking about right now is reconsidering the vote from the last meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, any, anyone else have anything before we vote for it?
So, am I, because I'm confused. Is, so we are just going to right now do a roll call vote to reconsider it, and then we can open it up for discussion, correct?
Correct.
Yes. So you, you do this, you do this vote to reconsider, then somebody would make a motion one way or the other on the substance of the question.
Got it.
Get a, get a second and then debate it.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions on the reconsideration? Not necessarily the watering, but the reconsideration, so we can discuss. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Verkaman?
Yes.
Mayor Van Nuys?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
No.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Back on the table then with the flower watering.
So Merchant, uh, I would like to make a motion, uh, to approve the Marine City Garden Club flower watering for the 2020 season. Correct?
Correct.
And Verkaman supports.
Okay, now we can discuss.
Now we can discuss. All right, you brought it up. You got something for us?
Well, I, yeah, um, so why I'm bringing it back up is because I was a little confused on the whole process last time when we did that. Um, I think City Manager Levin kind of indicated that there was money set aside, a portion of money that was set aside for, uh, some of the watering, and so I was, I guess I would need to hear from Elaine exactly what that portion is, how it's broken down. Uh, there was a $5,000, um, um, monies that was, uh, spoken about, but I, I guess I don't know exactly how that all works into watering flowers for $5,000, so. Can Elaine, can you help me with this?
Sure, no problem. So the $5,000 is what Mike estimated that it would cost to have the flowers watered throughout the, the season. So that would be starting from probably May to, I believe, about August, maybe even early September. Um, so we do have money in this year's current budget to start that. Um, obviously, that would go through July 1st, and then we would need to make an appropriation in the 2020, 21 budget for the remaining costs of that.
So right now, you're thinking it costs about $1,000 a month to water flowers?
That's probably a good estimate.
Actually, Paul, let me interject, because we don't usually set the flowers till either right before or right after the Memorial Day, so you've got June, July, and August, and sometimes part of September, if we have the, if the person's available.
Okay.
So you're looking at roughly three months, three to three and a half months.
And there is money set aside right now for a portion of that, of May, May and June, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. We basically June, because we don't set them to almost the end of the month.
Okay, all right, so, so June, so we've got some, okay. Um, and then I guess, go ahead.
I just have a quick question. So, uh, this is Verkaman, by the way. Um, so if we have like a rainy summer, um, and the flowers, instead of getting watered, you know, five or six days a week, are only watered three days a week, that obviously, that brings, that, that brings that cost down, because even though it's budgeted for $5,000, the person, obviously, there's some, um, hourly rate of the flower waterer, right? And they punch in and punch out, correct?
Correct.
Uh, Hendrick here. Um, the problem is, is we've asked that when it's pouring down rain, they still water them. So they water them regardless of whether it rains or not, seven days a week.
And due to the fact. Due to the fact they're hanging baskets, they do need to be watered even if it is raining most, a lot of times, because the rain sometimes isn't effective in a basket as it is on a flower that's planted in the ground.
Okay, but you, yeah, Dave, you're the expert, so I'm, that makes sense.
Because we'll be watering outside in the rain at times ourselves, especially on anything that hangs like that, because they don't have the same openings that you would get on a ground, uh, basket, or something planted in the ground.
All right, so then that, the money that's budgeted is, is, is a true amount, then? It's, it's, it's not going to decrease because of that?
Not really.
Okay, all right.
Mayor Bill Claussen?
Go ahead.
That was, that was budgeted for the watering for this year, uh, in, in July, which, in the end, can't we amend the, the budget if it, if it's going over what we have set aside for it already?
Well, that would actually be in the 2020, 21 budget that you're talking about, because we won't know until we get into the next budget, which we, uh, are doing the budget workshop sometime in May for that.
Okay, but that, the year, but that 5,000 is an estimate.
The 5,000 is an estimate.
Okay, do we know what, what the true cost was last year?
I don't have those in front of me. If, if Mike estimated it at 5,000, I, I don't believe that it exceeded 5,000.
Do we know if these, um, if these pots and barrels or these baskets, are they, I mean, are they done? Are they ready to be put out, or what's?
No, they won't be, like I said, they won't get put out till, till, at around Memorial Day.
Memorial Day, okay, all right.
They've, they've already been planted.
Oh, okay, all right. All right.
So the Garden Club's already committed to these, correct?
Correct.
Bill Claussen, the, the, the Garden Club committed to pay for the flowers and the baskets, right?
Correct. Bill, I, I, I want to say, though, I, I think this is something, this is, the Garden Club, um, they started this, let's say, a couple months ago, asked businesses and community members, just like they did last year, to, you know, to pitch in. Um, and I know that they've received some monies already, um, and I know other businesses have already, have said that despite what's going on, they're still going to commit money to this. So the businesses and the community members are ready to pay for the basket. So, and, and so the Garden Club kind of just assumed that this was going to happen. I want to say that if we're going to pull, you know, cut them off at the knees on this, that we need to do it in January.
Or even before.
You know, instead, instead of doing it now.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Wendy. I think this is way late for us to be bringing to us, um, and I think, you know, that's kind of a, um, it's kind of like we're pulling the rug from underneath them, like you say. Um, I think that maybe Elaine, that you should have maybe foreseen this a little bit, uh, sooner, um, especially if we know we're going to be doing this year after year. I mean, it does, does kind of put us in a little bit of an issue, I think. I do understand that we need to keep monies tight right now, especially with the financial uh, in economic downturn that we've got, but at the same time, I do understand how the flowers, um, you know, do bring some brightness down to a gloomy time, so, um, I just, I just feel that, you know, maybe in the next round, uh, we need to have a little bit more conversation, or you should have a little bit more conversation with the Garden Club, um, you know, to bring this, uh, to us a little bit sooner.
Well, I think one of the issues with that is that they were working on getting funding, and that their funding, they didn't know that they were ready in time. This is one of those things where you can't put the cart before the horse. And also, considering that we're working really, for the most part, on this in the 2021 budget, we get a lot of people that submit information that they want to be included in the 2021 budget.
Understood.
Um, Lisa Hendrick?
Yes.
I'm not against the flowers, and I know before the Garden Club ever took over, the flowers were put up once, uh, or, well, two years in a row, from the old Scarecrow Festival, some of you might not remember, and the flowers were put up and watered, paid for by those funds, the city never had to pay any. Then that went away, and then this was picked up here. Now, TIPA used to pay for the flowers until that went away, and so now the Garden Club does the flowers and, and want us to water. Now, it's fine and dandy, um, sometimes, but my concern is the next budget. And I know, um, I know it's too early to tell, but we're going to suffer some serious setbacks with the monies that we are going to get, and so we're going to have to be very careful, and I don't want to cut out any regular employees or have to worry about that just to water flowers, so, as much as I love them, and I, I know they're a great thing for the community, we're going to have to be very, very careful with this next budget.
Anyone have anything else?
Well, the only thing I have, Bill Claussen, is how, how long is this stay-at-home going to last? They keep adding it and adding it. We don't, we don't know when it's going to end.
True.
All right, right now, we're working on wash, on flower watering. We'll worry about that and then different discussions, so. Anyone have anything else on flower watering? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Van Nuys?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Merchant?
Um, Jeff?
Commissioner Verkaman?
Yes.
Motion, motion carries.
All right, moving on to, uh, huh, City Manager's vote.
Thank you. Um, speaking about how long the stay-at-home order is going to last, the executive order has been extended, obviously, until the end of April. executive order has been extended, obviously, until the end of April. Uh, don't know any indication about whether that's going to be extended or not. However, the executive order for the Open Meeting Act has been extended, extended through May 12th. So, if need be, that will get us through our next meeting, which is May 2nd. Um, I have been spending more time working on the executive orders and a number of things. Um, I regard, I reviewed the approved bills at the state regarding water speed limits, which really does not have much of an impact on us, because based on the DNR law, we already have a no-wake law in, along the St. Clair River in Marine City. Um, I reviewed the executive order for the FOIA, that it extends the response time from five days to 10 days, along with some other issues regarding that. How department head meetings, uh, we are doing those on a weekly basis right now. Uh, one of the things that the department heads have been tasked with is to contemplate the needs that we're gonna have for the next 90 days, and also starting to work on a back-to-work plan, so how we're going to gradually bring people, um, back into the office on a full-time basis. Um, there's been some webinars that I have continued to do through MML. Um, I also watched the governor's press conference regarding that April 30th extension. Um, one of the things that has been a big issue throughout the state is lawn mowing issues. Um, I know that the government, governor has said that we cannot have contractors mowing lawns. However, recognizing that we do have people in the community that are either disabled, don't own a lawnmower, or have joint ownership of property, it is going to be a pressing issue. Uh, I have talked to the attorney about this, and there is a carve-out for, uh, health and safety, welfare issues to be completed, so contractors that do need to come in to mow lawns when it does become an issue, uh, will be allowed to do that. Uh, I attended the EDA board meeting, a cybersecurity webinar, and I've been working with the EDA on redevelopment-ready community, a strategic plan and mission that eventually will come before the city commission for approval. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for the City Manager?
Uh, yes, I have a couple. Bill Klaassen.
Go ahead, Bill.
Uh, I noticed that the treasurer's inspector was not great for light using, uh, for our, um, and for high-tech to do the work on it. Uh, how many licenses do we have, and how many did we, did we add to it? Because of, because of the nineteen.
Uh, I'm not quite clear what you're talking about on licensing.
Well, if you're, if you're doing CSNA, each, each one of your, uh, computers has a, or your desktop has a license for it. Well, if you have four licenses and a five, a fifth person tries to get on, they can't get on because there's not five licenses. It says here that you increased the licenses. I wondered, I asked, what did you increase it to ten? What did we have?
Oh, this is for the, uh, virtual private network, so this is, so that we are able to work remotely and be able to connect into the server and have really a duplication of our computer desktop on our laptops. Uh, prior to the ten, I believe, we had two.
You had two, and now you, now you got eight, eight more.
Ten total.
And, and you pay for each license, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a one-time cost.
Because of the nineteen, because of what we're into right now, we've got costs that weren't budgeted.
But, they, they were thirty dollars each.
I, I'm just saying, we got stuff that are, that's coming up, that it wasn't budgeted, and that's because we didn't expect it to happen. So, we're, we're already to a point where we're using money that wasn't budgeted.
That is true.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone, anyone else?
Yes, Lisa Hendrick.
Go ahead.
Um, I see in here that you got the topographical, the surveys. Um, do you have those?
Um, I don't know if I actually got those in person yet. Um, I did get the invoice for them. Um, I'll, I'll follow back on that, and, uh, I can email it out to everyone.
Okay, and the other thing related to that is, um, did you ever get a cost report from them, yet?
Uh, you're talking about the guaranteed maximum price?
Yeah.
No, because they need to have an engineer that comes into the bill, or actually, a couple engineers come into the building to gather some more information before they can get that number.
Okay, that's all I have, thanks.
Anyone else have a question for the City Manager? I have one for you. How are you doing on having, uh, the phones manned for, our eight to six? Monday through Thursday.
We're reading the phones from, from nine to six, so we did, uh-
Okay. Excellent, okay. As long as they got somebody they can talk to.
Yep.
Um, no one else has anything else for the City Manager? We're gonna move on to Commissioner Privilege and Liaison Reports. Hearing none, we'll move on to Commissioner Privilege and Liaison Report. Cheryl, would you like to get us started?
Um, I'm, I'm good right now, thank you.
Okay. Well, you got anything for us tonight?
Um, no, I, I'm all set also.
Okay. Bill, you got something for us tonight?
Uh, just be, be safe, watch yourself, and keep your distance. It's still going on, we don't know how long, and I just, in Happy, St. Clair County has got the low numbers. Thank you.
Wendy, what you got for us?
No, I just wanna, you know, uh, say the same thing that, um, Commissioner Klaassen said, you know, everybody just, uh, continue to do what we're being asked to do, and, um, you know, keep our distance, um, you know, go out only as necessary, and, uh, just stay safe. And the more we do that, the sooner we'll get out of this. And thanks, everybody, for cooperating so far.
Lisa.
Nothing tonight.
Jacob.
Nothing.
All right, well, this will be pretty quick. Uh, all I want to say is we, we're gonna have to start considering getting the economy rolling. Um, I just feel that we need to really be proactive with our social distancing and continue that, but we do need to get things rolling here shortly. I mean, summer's gonna be upon us, and, uh, hopefully we have a good, uh, results from the antibody studies that are going on right now, and it's great to hear that there's very few people using the, um, the Old Cobos Center for hospital, it means the hospitals are starting to catch up, which is a great thing. And, uh, I'm just hoping that we can get everything, get this resolved, and get back to business as usual. So, with that, let's, uh, I need a motion to adjourn.
Hendrick, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Report.
In favor?
Roll call vote.
A roll call vote, I'm-
Commissioner, Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Klaassen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Come on, somebody say no. Maybe? No. Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes, thank-
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, everyone, for getting through one. Hopefully, this is our last meeting like this, maybe one more, but let's hopefully can get out of a regular meeting, get face-to-face and-
Absolutely.
Get back to business.
Yes.